Right now.
So we're good to go. All right. So I'll open the Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, April 15th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. I'm just going to read a notice in because we're doing this virtual through Zoom. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The meeting is being recorded within, and within 48 hours, we will post a link of the recording on the town's website and/or other town social media webpages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. Are all the members on? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Yes. Including Mr. Aitken's our associate member?
Yes.
Yes.
So the following members participating, Patrick Driscoll, Raymond Dejamian, Gene Guarino, Michael McDonald, Stephen Geller, and William May. During the meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call votes. The following town of Bridgewater staff will also be participating remotely. This Jennifer Burke, the Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Elijah Romulus, Assistant Town Planner, Mr. Azu Antonero, Town Engineer, and Mrs. Leslie Dohr, the Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask you to use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address with your question. The chair will recognize questions in order. You can also use the Raise My Hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking your question. If you are on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So with that being said, we have one public hearing, and we have two public meetings. If the board is okay, I'd like to take ordinance D FY 20-006 zoning ordinance out of order. This is a discussion to amend Section 8.9.60 of the town bylaws by changing the zoning of assesses map 83 lots 11-20 and 29-39 from residential A B to planned development. Is there any objections taking that out of order?
No.
No.
Okay, so just because I imagine a number of the people that have signed on here for that, that discussion, Mr. Romulus, if you wouldn't mind, we received a letter to withdraw that zoning amendment request from the applicant today, I believe?
Yes. It is right here.
Should we read it into the record, or should we just note that we have it, or?
I would read it into the record, Pat.
All right, so it's addressed to County Bridgewater Planning Board, 66 Central Square, Bridgewater, Mass. This is from Attorney Brennan. It's a proposed zoning change, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater, Mass. Dear Mr. Driscoll, I've attached a copy of the letter to Councilman Susan requesting that he withdraw. I can't see. Could you move it to the left a little bit? It gets cut off by the, unless I can move my.
You can.
I can move, I can move, I got it. Requesting that he withdraw the pending petition for certain zoning changes to Claremont's property on the north side of Pleasant Street. Accordingly, I ask the planning board to take no action on the proposed changes at your meeting tonight, April 15th, 2020. So would you like a motion to accept a withdrawal request, or do we just?
It's actually, it's actually the council has to accept the withdrawal request, so the planning board will take no action at this time. Once the council acts on the withdrawal request, then it would come back to you to withdraw it from your action items.
So do you want a motion to take no action?
That's correct.
So do we have a motion to take no action?
The most.
Hey, Michael, do we have a second?
Sorry.
Hi, Steve. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, could somebody just clarify for me again? I'm not sure what we're doing here. By taking no action, are we, are we essentially putting this aside, or are we? I'm not sure. Are we being, are we being put into any corner here by taking no action?
No, so basically, they have requested that the council withdraw the petition without prejudice because it is an ordinance in front of the council. The council is the only one that can take that action. Because it is an item on your agenda, I double-checked with our town attorney as to procedure, and he suggested that the board take no action at this time, let the council act on the withdrawal. And then if the council chooses to allow the withdrawal without prejudice, then the board could then come back and vote to withdraw it from their action as well. But until the council takes that official vote, there's nothing for you to do. And it doesn't make sense for you to have a prolonged discussion and make a recommendation to the council. The council's going to consider to withdraw it.
I understand that. What if the council does not take no action?
If the council does not withdraw it, then it would just come back to you, and we would have what we would have had tonight, which would have been a discussion and a recommendation back to the council. It would keep the same process. It would just, just blaze it till after the next council meeting.
Effectively a motion to continue, pending what the council wants.
Yeah.
I do see you have a question in the chat asking, what does mean without prejudice?
Yeah, so Jen Hanson is asking, what does it mean? What does without prejudice mean? To answer that, if it's okay with the chair, I can answer that.
Sure.
Without prejudice means that they can, it'll be withdrawn, but they can refile it at any time at their choice. If they were to do it with prejudice, that would mean that they can't refile it.
But that's up to the council, correct?
That is up to the council, that's correct.
So I imagine this would go to their next meeting?
I believe it's been sent in time for their next meeting, but I don't do their agenda, so I don't, can't confirm that.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Do we have any more discussion? Ray, you also have the answers?
Unusual, but yes.
Now, we have another public question. I saw a pop-up, but then it went away. It looked like it was from Mrs. Hanson. Is that?
Yeah. I think she's just clarifying my answer, which is, so if without prejudice, they can always resubmit. The answer is yes, they can resubmit. If it's, if it's allowed to be withdrawn without prejudice, they can resubmit.
But by withdrawing, there's really nothing before us or the council.
That is correct, until, until, until they resubmit.
Do we have any other? I just can't see the pub. Do we have any other public questions, Mr. Romulus?
I don't see any.
Yeah, I don't see any myself.
Any more board questions?
Nope.
We have a motion, we have a motion in a second to.
I think Lawrence was trying to say something.
Say that again?
I think Lawrence was trying to say something. He was waving tremendously.
Yes.
Is that right? Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay. Oh, I think that Ray's point is well taken. I think that the board has to continue it to a date certain, to wait for council action. Because if you don't do that, then your advertising for the process that you're in right now goes away.
It's a.
They can continue it to a date certain, however, it's not in a public hearing anymore. It's not required.
I mean, given that it's obviously a public issue, I would, might continue it to a date certain, just so people following the process, no one to, but it's up to the rest of the board.
Whoever made the motion, whoever's made the, seconded the motion, can withdraw their motion, and then the person that made the motion can withdraw their motion, and then they'll make a new motion to continue to a date certain.
So everyone go with that? I'll draw the motion.
But Michael, you made the motion. Who seconded it? I'm sorry.
That's Steve. I was wrong, I seconded.
And then, Michael, you withdraw your motion?
Yep.
Okay, so do we have a new motion? So let's ask Ms. Dohr. Ms. Dohr, when is, when, roughly a month from now, when's our next, when's the meeting that we have? Not each meeting, because the council may not act on it, but when's?
Right, well, it would be the second Wednesday in May. Unfortunately, I don't have a calendar right in front of me.
Yeah, May 20th.
Is it the 20th?
Yes.
All right, so, so do we want to have a motion to take no action, but continue the discussion to May 20th? Is that what we're looking to do?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to continue to May 20th.
But and take no action at this point?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? The only, the only thing that I disagree with is, this isn't, they're not asking for continuance. They're asking for us to withdraw.
No, they're not asking you, they can't ask you to withdraw it. The only people that can withdraw it is the council.
Okay.
We're asking Susan to withdraw from the council.
Correct.
All right, so, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
And before I do that, we have no, I can't see any public hands or questions. They're all answered.
There are a couple of.
There is.
People sent some chats.
I'm responding to the chats. She's just clarifying.
Okay.
All right, so when I see Mrs. Hanson pop up, somebody's addressing that.
Well, yeah, now her question is, will the CEDC have this also? I can't speak to that. I have no idea.
Okay.
You should, you could call the council clerk or email the council clerk. She would have that answer.
All right, so motion and a second. So are we ready to go? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Romulus, could you bring the agenda back?
Yes.
This is Mr. Silver as well, so he's still unmuted, correct?
I believe so.
I do not have the public hearing notice, but I will open the public hearing for 365 Elm Street. This is a major site plan modification. The modification, modification includes a 500 feet of garage space located over the existing concrete pad and adds 392 feet of Class II sales office on Elm Street, map 58 lot 33. Do we have the public, do we have to read the public hearing notice? Is it included in the packet?
Yeah, no, you don't have to read the public hearing notice.
Are you showing?
We get, did we get the green cards? We did. They were emailed to us today.
Yes, I can bring that up, just to, just to verify.
Is the public hearing notice what is on, written on the agenda? No. Elijah, do you have the public hearing notice available to pull up, or no?
If you can give me one second, I can get that. All right.
Have the agenda up.
One second, please.
There you are.
Ken, do you want to read it? Just because we're on Zoom, I don't want to take things away.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Let me, um, can I, there it is. Okay, public hearing, Bridgewater Planning Board, on Wednesday, April 15th, 2020, 6:30 PM, the Bridgewater Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on application by Friedy Areola for a major modification to his site plan for property located at 365 Elm Street. The modification includes 500 feet of garage space located over an existing concrete pad and adds 392 feet of S2 sales office. The public hearing will be held as a virtual meeting over Zoom. A link and instructions to participate in the meeting will follow and be posted to the calendar on the town's website at www.bridgewaterma.org. A recording of the meeting will also be posted to the town's webpage within 48 hours after the meeting ends. Patrick Driscoll, Chairman. I think that's it.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, Mr. Romulus, do you mind scrolling down so we can see the planners? Or I know, I know, or do we want to just turn it over to Mr., why don't we turn it over to Mr. Silver first, and then we?
Can we bring up the plan itself?
Yes, I am bringing that up right now.
All right, if you could go to the, that's the first page, that's the second, which is existing conditions, and the third one is the proposed site plan. This is a, I'm Lawrence Silver from Silver Engineering Associates, offices at 1615 Beth Fitz Street in Bridgewater. The, the site plan submittal that has been made here is one that the board has, has looked at once before and approved. The, what happened here, though, is our client had some medical issues and financial issues and was not able to go forward with the project earlier. And as you know, these site plans do expire. Approvals expire, so his expired. So in coming back, we have prepared the site plan. There were some slight modifications to it, but it's essentially the same plan that was presented before that had been approved. There was some last minute kind of changes that occurred in order to address comments that had been raised by, by Elijah, and those had to do related to the amount of parking to support the project. And as a result, there's a reduction in the number of display spaces because there needed to be two spaces added more for customer parking. So there's only six display, I think it's six, isn't it, display spaces that are part of the project itself. He's essentially, it's a, it's a repair facility with some small amount of sales associated with it. His residence is to the rear of the site, so it's not the kind of residence that you would have to be totally separate from the operation. It's, it's, it's in essence like a customary home occupation, except that you're in an industrial area, and this isn't allowed use in this area. And it's, like I say, it was permitted before, and we're just trying to get it so that we have a current permit. His health is better now, and he'd like to go forward with the project. There was a summary sheet that we had provided to the board. I don't know if the board members had a chance to look at them, but it basically summarized the, the major aspects of the project itself. And so it's essentially, this is, allow for his operation to expand slightly, not really, to be more functional, I think is really the better way to describe it. And it's, and the way we have it outlined here is pretty much very close to what existing conditions are, except there wasn't a temporary office trailer that he had put in. I would say he should not have put it in, and that was to be removed. That was adjacent to the wetland side, the northerly side of the site, opposite where the existing building is. But that, that would have been the only other change that I see. Some of the last minute changes that we made to address comments, we made a slight adjustment to the proposed addition to the rear of the existing building so that it was not less, not more non-conforming than the original building. The original building was slightly over the setback line. This addition is actually complying with the, with the 25-foot setback on that side. With that, I guess it'd be better if I just answer whatever questions that you might have.
So, Mr. Silver, huh, and I, I was trying to figure out what happened. And I, I looked at the 2016 site plan today. How is he operating if he never completed the, the site plan? I never went forward. How, how is he running a repair and sale business there now? How was that, how was that ever approved if the, if the site was never developed to the site plan and signed off on?
Well, he had, he had the ability to operate there, but when he was trying to make changes to the, to the site, that's why he required a site plan approval.
But, but to build that garage and to repair autos, how was that ever approved years ago? Or when was that approved?
The one that, the existing garage that was there?
The, the existing, the, because, because on the, on the 2016, everything is existing as well, so how, when, when was the, when was the original site plan approved for the commercial building and the commercial auto repair permitted?
So were you talking about for the main building that's in the center of the?
The, the front auto repair building.
There was a site plan. There was a site plan submitted in 2006, I believe, by COSCO.
2006?
Yeah, I believe it was 2006.
And then, and then he wanted to do additions to that, and that's when we got involved in getting him the, the additions to the front left and to the rear of the building.
So in 2006, there was a site plan that?
Yeah, and with something that I provided you, it said in project description, says the project was first approved in July 24th, 2006, where his single-family dwelling home had the commercial garage added to it. So that, and then it, the project was closed in 2016, and then in August of 2016, a modification was approved. So we, so basically, he went from 2006 under his original approval that, I think you indicated that was COSCO who did the original. Yeah, right. And then we came back and did a modification to it subsequent to that, and that was approved in 2016. But then that expired because he didn't actually do the additional work.
So do you, do we know what the conditions on the 2006 plan were, or what that site was supposed to look like, or it's, I just, I mean, I went out there. It's pretty rough in terms of, it's not a pretty site. It's, and it's not well done, right? I mean, it's, it's a mess out there, frankly. Apparently.
Okay, well, I, some of those that look better than others, he's dealing with some pretty big vehicles sometimes, and it's not necessarily the cleanest.
Was it, was it approved to that, though, in 2006? Was, is it approved for that?
It was approved as a repair garage.
It was approved. We got Asbott closed out because it satisfied everything. We conservation closed out, and then we resubmitted to conservation as well. He's having, he's having trouble keeping his garage maintenance due to his health conditions.
He had very bad back problems, and in that business, having back problems is not an easy thing. So it was, you know, so he was having trouble making a living at that point. So I think that, you know, there were some things that he wished that he was able to do a little bit neater, but he wasn't able to at the time. I mean, I think that when you impose reasonable conditions about how he needs to keep the, the conditions of the, you know, of the place, I'm sure that those are okay.
Okay. All right, any other board, board notice?
There is a question from the audience when you have, when you're ready for that, Pat.
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead.
So I will unmute Arthur Cohen, when I can find his. Can I find him? Do you leave?
Before you do that, Jen?
Yeah.
Larry, Rebecca, the, we gave him a second cut on the, I don't see your North Arrow on this view. I assume the North Arrow is going up the top of the page. So on the north, northerly end, we, the town is allowing him to get a second access, so need to reflect that on the plan.
Was that what, as part of the Elm Street improvements they gave him a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and then the other item is the town, the town is dumping some drainage on his property, so you probably want to locate that drainage that the town has done.
Is it installed?
Yep.
Is that in the, is that in the Elm Street plans?
Yep.
It is.
Mr. Antonero, the driver, the current driveway showing off of Elm Street looks like it's on old Cedar Village property.
Yeah, we assume that way, and if he's going to maintain that, Larry, he will need to demonstrate for us that they've got an easement on Cedar Village property. Otherwise, he needs to realign that southerly driveway.
Okay.
Am I looking at, am I looking at that right, or is that, am I looking at it wrong?
No, you correctly, correctly. Can see the lot line that the, that dark solid black line is the lot line. And then the radius, the radi that is shown to the south of the lot line and to the north of the southern line, that's the driveway right there.
And it doesn't, it doesn't look like, is any of this site proposed to be paved? And if it's not paved, how are we dealing with, and how are we dealing with, like, oil water separators and drainage and all that?
Rebecca, you want to address what?
I was going to say, it is paved. It was paved prior. The drainage was designed with the COSCO design to have oil grit separator, I believe, and catch basins all along the edge of the wetland area there.
And that's all, that's all installed and was verified on the Asbott?
You can pull it up in Google Maps and see the street view for it if you really want to look at it. I'm doing it right now.
Is there, Mr. Romulus, we discussed the, do they need a special permit for this as well, or no?
Yes, so that was one thing we did discuss, because they are increasing a non-conforming use or pre-existing non-conforming use, they will have to come before the board for a special permit. We can, we can, you know, act on the site plan accordingly, but they will also have to apply for a special permit.
Yeah, I, you got to clarify that for me, because the use, because it's an existing use, so why are you saying we need a special permit for the use?
It's a, it's a, it's mixed use, Larry, so it's pre-existing non-conforming. Mixed use is not allowed on Elm Street. Right, you have residential and commercial.
It's existing, and it was approved prior, so that's an existing non-conforming.
Yes, Larry, it is.
Increase, you're increasing the non-conformity.
Are we increasing the non-conformity?
By adding the proposed office space, the, and the overhang.
So that's basically, Larry.
And the exposed garage.
That's not increasing the non-conformity because that is forming use.
No, no, timeout. That's, that's probably the wrong choice of word, but anyway, you are altering, altering a non-conforming use. Under Section 5, when you're altering a non-conforming commercial component, that acquires a special permit by the planning board. So you're altering and non-conforming, not increasing, when you're altering a non-conforming use, that requires a special permit from the planning board. If it was strictly residential, it would be, it will be a ZBA, but because he has a commercial component, and that commercial component that proposed a garage and the proposed office and the proposed overhang, that is altering existing non-conforming garage.
So when we came before them, before, when we had it approved in 16? So when we came before them, before, when we had it approved in sixteen. But I remember there being a special permit requirement.
Because, 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 well, it was an oversight.
Was, was, was the, was the proposed overhang and all that stuff, is this the same plan that was proposed in two thousand sixteen?
No, the office and overhang are new. Uh, no, I'm sorry, the overhang is not, the office is new.
So if you missed that time, Larry, it was simply missed.
Okay.
But missing it that time does not necessarily then mean that we need to miss it again.
Understand that. Okay, and as far as that driveway issue, um. I'm trying to remember if, how that was addressed the first time around. Um, right, because I think it was addressed the first time around, but I, I'll have to go back and see.
Where, where, where do we get a, um? Leslie, do we have a copy of the two thousand six plan and decision letter?
No.
How do we get a copy of that, Mr. Cosker?
No, I can get you a copy, but do you need it right now?
No, no, no. So you, so you have a copy of the two thousand six plan?
Yes.
And the Asbott and the decision letter?
Yes.
Personally, I think that'd be helpful to look at, see what was approved and what's there and then what you're trying to modify.
But Mr. Chairman, uh, just, uh, for everybody's benefit, I don't think, you don't need a new plan. Uh, for the special permit, uh, like Elijah said, you can tack on as far as the special permit application.
Oh, yeah, what I, what I'm more concerned about is.
The plans that we have, as far as the current application is concerned, the plans that we have will be adequate to. Uh, will handle both applications, so.
You know, you know, I, I just, I went out there Monday and to be honest, I. I was, I, I couldn't believe, I, I'm glad to hear it was approved in two thousand five, six, because I couldn't believe we approved that. I, I, I thought it was. I thought it was, you know, it, it, it's a rough site. It, it needs some work, so.
Understood.
So, um, there is, um, a question from the public, um, I'm muting Arthur Cohen. Um, did you just say your name and address for the record? But it's not.
Hey, Monica Cohen, I live at four Old Cedar Village. And I'm on the, uh, association here. So I just had a question regarding, um, what is going on and. Would it be possible a privacy wall that could go up because of the noise and all the business that he does with his large trucks? And obviously his home is back there as well.
So, but what, can I ask a question? What would be the concern about his home?
Well, no, I'm just saying that everything back there is the noise, he has the trucks back there. His home's in the very back. I'm correct. But sometimes maybe some privacy for the, for our residents versus the business during the day and some early evening sometimes.
So the privacy, what you'd be looking for is something along where the business part of it is.
Yes, correct.
I'm looking at. So, but if, but Mr. Silver, it looks like the whole thing could be used in business because there's. Bracked trailer parking next to the house, is that correct?
Yeah, but, but you do need to keep in mind that it's the housing development. Adjacent to this, which is the one that's not zoned correctly, it's a forty B. So, I mean, it's been introduced into an industrial area. So you, you have to at least keep that in mind when you're, when you're looking at this. I would have said, quite honestly, that it would have been up to Old Cedar Village. To make sure that they had screened themselves from the potential industrial uses that may occur along this section of Elm Street.
Isn't, isn't there already a pine hedge all along that property already?
Yeah, satellite picture, you'll see that.
Yes. I mean, I'm sympathetic to it, but I mean, this is residential that's been placed inside an industrial zone.
And looking at it from the street, I have to disagree with your assessment, Mr. Driscoll, on, on what it looks, it looks like an industrial complex. But it doesn't, it looks perfectly fine to me. I mean, it, it isn't the Ritz, but it's for repairing large trucks.
I just, I, I'd like to see what was approved.
And if it was, if it was approved before, I don't know what the, the problem is now.
We don't know if there's a problem.
If I may on that point, I, I've been by there a number of times, my right? I think it has gone downhill in terms of the way it's taken care of.
I can look at a street view and I don't see it so bad and it's a twenty-twenty picture.
I think, take a, take a ride and look at the site.
For the, uh, Mr. Chairman, just to, uh, uh, Mr. Silva's point though. This, this, uh, Old Cedar Village came to after the, after the fact, now it was. This use here preceded Old Cedar Village.
And I, I don't think I have any problem with the use. I just have a problem with. I mean, the, the, the site is not a very well maintained and designed site right now, and I'm hoping Mr. Silva's plan will rectify that. But I just want to make sure that we have appropriate conditions in place that. It, you know, while we have the opportunity to clean up what I consider to be an eyesore on Elm Street that we're trying to redevelop. I think that, that we should try to improve the site. I, I'm not looking to take the use away or change the use or anything like that. It. There doesn't, there, there doesn't seem to be much in terms of site improvements out there right now, and I'm hoping that, that we can rectify it through this process.
And I can understand that because, um, you want to draw. More business out in that area too. That's the purpose of the area.
But I'm, I'm concerned about person who's owning it. If, what happens if they just afford what you want? That isn't, I mean, it isn't such an eyesore. I'm, like I said, I'm looking at it in high def. So, I mean, it's just like being there in Elm Street view. And you can pull it up too and show it to people if you want. But it is, it is just what I expected it to be. It is a place where they repair large trucks.
It's a mom and pop business and the guy's trying to make a living. I mean, really trying to do.
Well, cor- correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what, what really needs to happen next is. Uh, Mr. Silver's gonna have to go back and, and adjust his plan to account for the second entrance coming into this, coming into the spot as far as the Elm Street project goes, correct? Which is, which is going, which is going to affect the parking that's shown in the front along Elm Street.
That's correct.
And then I, I would suggest going back to your client from what you're hearing. Is maybe that he wants to add a, a, some type of screening along Elm Street. To, to, you know, mitigate looking in at the, uh, at, at all, at all the trucks that are parked there. And if, if, if it's to be a good neighbor to add a section of fencing or something along that portion. If, if he can afford it, I, I think that would be, you know, great. And then make sure that the rest of this, you, you know, conforms to everything. Because we, because we can really go back and forth about arguing about what it looks like. You, you know, driving by today, what you're looking at Google Earth. Google Earth can be taken, you know, a year ago or.
Looking at the date, it's twenty nineteen.
It's twenty nineteen, we're in twenty twenty, times have changed. So I, I, I just think we're, we're gonna go back and forth and back and forth and get note.
The other thing I disagree with Steve on is the, uh, the, I don't think the onus is on the business that was pre-existing in its industrial area to put up any kind of additional, uh, you know, screening.
I agree with Michael.
Especially if it's already been operating as is.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm sympathetic to the screening concerns, but I, I think that would be on Old Cedar to do that.
Okay, so what, Mr. Robbins, what are we, what are we looking for? Looking for the plan to be adjusted? Looking, I'd like to see what was approved in two thousand six. And the conditions of two thousand six.
Make sure the initial entryway is, um.
Yes. Yes, like Gina had mentioned, the driveway, uh, being rectified, updating the site plan, um. And then the special permit application as well.
Is, is Rebecca still on with us?
I am, I am still here.
So just a question. So you, you mentioned that everything that's shown parking wise and whatnot is currently paved?
Uh, there is a small section that is not paved in the northern corner, like in the display section. That was approved to get paved and that needs to be paved now.
Is, is, is the, and I just, you know, going by it on Monday, the pavement looked like there were, you know, big ruts and water.
Yep.
Spots. Is the pavement in poor condition?
The pavement has been patched a few times.
Not for a place that's fixing big rigs, it's gonna get.
It's worn.
Yeah, it's, it's used, it's.
And then you said some of the drainage, uh, so you said some of the drainage came in. Where, where exactly did that drainage come in? Close to the wetlands?
Yeah, right, right where, you know, where that wood says no snow sign? That section right there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Yeah, and I'm, I'm trying, in my head, I'm thinking, yeah, how's this second entrance gonna help or hurt him here? Because it's gonna really take away any display possibility.
And that's why you're gonna have to explain to him.
Well, maybe the second entrance can be the only entrance, the other one can be closed up and we can shift everything down.
I thought about that, but then it's the, how you get the vehicles through.
Oh, yeah, trucks, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we have to revisit that, because maybe we need to move the display the other side. Or something to that nature. In other words, we gotta, we gotta look to see what's the impact of that second entrance. Is that, that's an optional second entrance? It's not one that he has to utilize?
He requested it.
He requested it. Oh, pretty. He requested it, okay.
Now, Mr. Silver, is there a fence on your plan? It looks like there is a fence proposed in the front.
There was a fence proposed from the two thousand sixteen approval.
And then there was, uh, um, I believe that it was. An amendment to it where the fence did not need to be put in. Um, there was, that was revisited after that original approval.
So, so, so if, if what we approved in two thousand sixteen expired, what we're really looking to do now is amend the two thousand six, correct?
I'm sorry, you're saying what you approved in two thousand sixteen?
But that expired.
That expired.
So what we're really looking to do is amend the two thousand six approval, correct?
You're not amended, no, because she did not, there was no special permit issued then. It was just a site plan.
Right, right, but we, but we.
That's not wrong with the land.
But we should look at what was approved, we should see what was approved in two thousand six.
Right, but it's not an amendment. We need to make, make sure that we understand that, Mr. Chairman. It's not an amendment of a two thousand six plan. Then you, what you have before you is an application for a site plan. Of course, requires a special permit for the proposed alterations that they're making, but you're not amending the two thousand six plan. I just want to make sure.
I mean, we, we, correct, but we advertise it as a major modification.
Yes. Major modification with the special permit.
So, so that, so right now, Mr. Antonero, it's on the agenda as a major modification.
Well, the, uh, the problem with that is they, uh, they might have been thinking the modification of the two thousand sixteen approval. Uh, because that required, that was brought before this planning board. Unfortunately, as Mr. Silver has noted, that expired, so it's, it has no validity. So it's really a, a site plan for, uh. A moni- uh, an alteration of a non-conforming.
It, it, basically what you're saying is it's as if the two thousand sixteen did not occur. And basically, it's, it's a modi- just like we approached it two thousand sixteen, with the exception that you're saying that the special permit issue has to be addressed.
Correct.
Yeah. I agree, I understand.
If I understand correctly, in two thousand sixteen, it was approved without any issues, right?
It was approved, the site plan was approved, uh, to be modified.
And what's different now besides that it's four years later and that the person that was trying to do it couldn't do it because of health reasons? I mean, being.
Well, the issue, the issue that's being raised right now is whether or not it needed a special permit. Uh, that was not requested at that time when it was approved in two thousand sixteen. Um, I'm gonna go back and check to see whether or not that issue. Possibly did get addressed at that point, I'm not certain, uh, but, um. I don't know if there had been a determination made differently, maybe by the building department or something, because it seems to me that for it to have gone. Um, unnoticed or unresolved, doesn't seem like that necessarily. Would have been what took place in two thousand sixteen. Something must have been done relative to that. Um, but I'm gonna look at that to see whether or not that's a factor or not here.
Maybe I oversimplify things, but if it's very similar to what happened in two thousand sixteen and there's no huge difference between it. And it was just a medical thing, wouldn't it be just to be good, decent people to? Help the, help the person out? I mean, he, he can't help that he had a medical issue, like he threw out his back or whatever he could, doing a very hard job.
But the issue, Bill, is that in two thousand sixteen, I don't believe, and I don't believe Azu believes, or Elijah believes, that it was approved correctly. So we're trying to write that now.
I'm just still thinking from the humanity point of view. It's a human trying to, trying to make a living.
I understand that, but we still have laws we have to follow. And it expired.
Correct. All right, so, and, 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 you know, it doesn't mean we did everything right in two thousand sixteen. If we had the opportunity to correct it, we're investing a tremendous amount of money in Elm Street. There are people in, you know, building beautiful buildings down there. I, I, I would like to educate myself and see what was approved in two thousand six. He's looking to expand that use and how we can best address it to make it work for him and make it an improved site for the town.
Okay. I, I, I get that, Mr. Chairman, but. We need to get away from two thousand six, because that doesn't even apply anymore. It's gone. So you can't go back and say, let's drag in two thousand six. You have to look at the application as it is and review it on its merit. What have you did in two thousand six as a site plan review doesn't hold water anymore. That's gone. You know, you can't tack on that. That's gone.
So, so, so Azu, what you're saying is this application should be pulled. And it should not be a major modification, it should be a new site plan.
That's correct.
With a special permit.
Review it as a site plan and then, and then a special permit for alteration of a non-conforming. Structure, that's it.
Uh, but Azu, uh, don't, I mean, we're talking about two different years, the two thousand six and two thousand sixteen. I understand that the two thousand sixteen wasn't acted upon and that expired, but the two thousand six was, and that's what it built. So is it not a modification on the two thousand six one?
But the building right now, it's non-conforming. Because it's not, it's not conforming, so what was approved in two thousand six, when you, once you're mod- altering, not a modification. Of the u- of the structure, that's what's triggering the special permit with the planning board.
Well, listen though, but listen to me for a second. From a zoning point of view, there's been more than ten years that have passed. So doesn't that, doesn't by itself the fact that ten years passed since two thousand six? That that use and the need for that special permit is now a moot point? No.
A mixed use is still not allowed in that, uh, district.
No, but because the zoning did not get, uh, challenged during the ten years. Um, my, I guess my question was whether or not it, it can actually be challenged at this point that it requires a special permit for.
Right, because it's, it is still non-conforming right now. Conforming.
As you're, because you're bringing a new plan forward, Larry, with additional work, uh, expansion and new proposal. So now we're asking for a special permit. If, if you do anything to the site and you left it as is. I don't think we'd go back to you and ask for a special permit now, ten years later. But because you're coming forward with additional construction requests, now you need a special permit.
Because we're looking for the changes.
That's correct.
All right.
So they want to improve the lot. And we need a special permit because we need to improve, right?
Because they're not, they're not within the zoning bylaws. If you read the zoning bylaws.
But if they didn't do anything, they would be fine.
Correct. I mean, they'd still be non-conforming, but we, we would not go back after the fact and ask for it. They are before us now. We're getting, we're rewriting what happened 10 years ago.
It's the reason, it's stuff like this, the reason I've been losing business in, uh, in Bridgewater. Okay.
I disagree with that, but, Matt, um, Rebecca, if you wouldn't mind, could you get the 2006 plan, just even though we may not need it, just so I can educate myself on the, the site?
Yes.
And the decision letter?
Okay.
So, just so we can give Mr. Silver and Mr. Baptiste clear direction, do they need to refile this and how do they need to refile it? Or can they move forward with what they have based on our discussion and just add a special permit to it?
They cannot, they can amend their, uh, they can amend the site plan, I believe, uh, uh, instead of a modi- modification, so just amend the application to be a site plan application.
Yeah, I don't think they need to refile, pull it and refile. They, we sent out advertising, we sent out green cards, we did a notice in the paper. Someone that wanted to get notice was notified and would be listening tonight or have access, um, they would have to submit an application for a site plan, though.
Yes.
A site plan and a special permit, correct?
I'm sorry, I said site permit, special permit, yes.
Uh, yeah, so an application for a special permit, and they can continue with, uh, the, uh, site plan modification with the understanding that we're changing it to the, uh, site plan.
Okay, let's redo this. They're gonna file a s- a special permit application, and then they're gonna file concurrent with that a site plan application to amend the application that they filed as a modification. We're not doing a modification, we're doing a site. So they actually need.
Right.
An application, simply a site plan application.
Correct.
I'm confused now, okay.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
Well, why is it not a site plan modification? Because it was a previously approved site plan by the planning board. Even though the special permit, I understand the special permit part, but isn't it still a modification? It's just not a modification. It's a modification of the 2006.
No, it's not a modification, Larry, because special, uh, site plan does not wrong with the land. Special permit runs with the land. That site plan does not wrong with the land, because a site plan is simply a plan that you do as a matter of right. So it's not a modification, you're not modifying an application of a site plan. You're doing a site plan application, whatever is there right now is all your existing conditions. Then the special permit kicks in because of the non-conformity. That's it.
I've been left speechless, and that doesn't happen. It happened back in 1920, 1980 or something.
I would say, I would make this suggestion, Mr. Chairman. I would suggest that the board continue this public hearing to a date and time certain.
Okay.
And in the meantime, Elijah, Azu and I can get together with Larry and Rebecca and figure out the correct procedure and process going forward. That being said, I would suggest that you continue it out in enough time so that we have enough time to advertise for our special permit and whatnot.
And, and I would also encourage all the board members, I know we can't do a formal site walk, but to drive by and educate themselves on the site and the surrounding properties as well. So maybe we can have some, you know, recommendations next meeting and wrap it up for them.
If I could, just a minor suggestion, I mean, regarding screening, I, I know the site pretty well, and I can't see requiring them to put screening up next to 40B since they were there first, but I would like to see some sort of screening on Elm Street, whatever that may be.
Okay.
And so, uh, to give enough time to, uh, take care of all this, um, I would suggest a meeting in June, uh, either.
How, how, how about a May 20th meeting?
I don't think that would be enough time to re-advertise if we're trying to figure out the, um, application process.
That's a month away, right?
Yeah, thinking about this, Pat, we've gotta, we gotta do 14 days for notices. We're in a, a pandemic situation trying to get a butter's notices out. It could be difficult. I would, I would say you need at least another meeting after that.
First meeting in June is what?
June 3rd?
Yes.
Okay, with the hopes that we can wrap it up at that point?
Yes.
We'll do our best.
So what I would ask, in order for us to be able to achieve that, is that once we do make these changes and so forth, any comments that may pertain to it, if we could get those in a by your May 20th meeting, might be, uh, help us make sure that we have everything nice and tight for the June 3rd.
As soon as we receive the comments from the town engineer, Larry, they will be turned over to your office.
Okay.
You have my word on that.
We should have plenty of time, Azu, right?
Sorry.
We should, I mean, we should, right?
Plenty of time.
They're gonna shoot for having everything by the 20th of May, so that gives us enough time to.
You got it.
Fair enough.
Sounds good. I, I owe Zoo lunch every time he beats me to a meeting and he signed on to Zoom before me tonight. It's a world record.
All right, fair enough.
So we need a vote and a motion.
Uh, what date is that? June 5th?
June 3rd.
3rd. Make a motion to continue 365 Elm Street to June 3rd at 6:30.
Do we have a second?
Second. Do I'm gonna go take pictures of the place?
Any discussion?
I'll post your pictures.
Is there any discussion? Oh, uh, wait, I get a roll call, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. Jamien?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Elijah, so so next up, we have, um, 48 Samuel Avenue, which is also known as 167 East Street, the Checkman Family Limited Partnership. This is a Form A, an A and R plan to request, uh, to reconfigure map. Well. Uh, to reconfig- reconfigure map 26 parcel 31 into, into lot 2 and retreat lot 1, reconfiguring map 26 parcel 33 into lots 3 and parcel A. So do we have, uh, did I see Mr. Woodward signed in?
Yes, I needed him.
Yes.
And do we have, um, the plan that we can bring up, Mr. Romulus?
Uh, yes, let me bring that up, right.
Yeah. Do we, after, uh, Mr. Antonero's comments on this, do we get a revised plan?
Uh, no, uh, Mr. Woodward did reach out to me, uh, earlier this, uh, earlier today, asking, and I, uh, mentioned that we should discuss the, um, the changes at the meeting to, right now.
Okay, um, Mr. Antonero?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to discuss the changes and the recommendations that you made?
Uh, yes, um, so if you look at, uh, um, uh, lot number one, that is the retreat lot that is being created. That meets all the requirements for a retreat lot. Lot number two will serve as the, um, regular lot, requiring 150 feet of frontage and, um, a building rectangle that is, uh, 110 feet wide and 100 feet deep uh, to fit, um, within the, um, first 100 feet from the street. By taking out the 30 feet from the land, uh, they needed a six-foot strip from the abutment land of, uh, can't see the name of the owner. Uh, okay, good, uh, of, uh, Cheryl Moore. So if you see that, where it says parcel AC detail, now that parcel A, that six-feet strip will make lot 1 to conform, uh, to the required 150 feet. The problem with that is, if you endorse this plan and that, that gets recorded, that does not necessarily combine those pro- that parcel. So the only way you can make sure that that parcel is indeed combined with lot 1 so that you are not unwittingly, uh, endorsing a plan that will be creating a non-conformity. Either they record that parcel 2, uh, still in lot 2 as a lot that is non-conforming until that parcel is combined. If you endorse it anywhere, because you have 21 days within which to endorse a plan, then you should make a note that a building permit should not issue, uh, to lot 1. A building permit should not issued, uh, to lot 1 until the recording of parcel A and con- and conveying it to the owner of lot 1 has been consummated, and that you know that that's been combined. So that the board doesn't unwittingly end up endorsing a plan that leaves a lot non-conforming. Just because I show a plan or showing a plan, a parcel A to be combined, that combining doesn't take place until there's an actual deed conveying that. So, uh, your insurance policy to make sure that that actually gets done is that you don't sign off on a building permit application for lot 1 until you see the combin- uh, the combining of that parcel A with lot 2.
So Mr. Antonero, how do, if this was a Form A, we can't condition it, so how do we?
You can't condition it, but you can make a note, instruct your, instruct your staff to make sure that a building permit is not signed off on lot 1, and you can do that, Pat. You, you can't condition a Form A, but you can instruct your staff to, uh, uh, keep an eye out for lot 1 when it comes in for building permit. You can withhold, you can withhold signing off on that building permit until that is done.
Okay, so just for clarification, you pointed out the rectangle and you pointed out that, that issue. Are you recommending we endorse what's before us or wait till that rectangle's added?
Oh, no, no, so what you wanna do, unless Mr. Woodward asks for you to continue the endorsement, it has to come from him. If he doesn't, then your vote, you should take your vote not to endorse because of the following reasons. And tha- and therefore, you will not be acting, uh, contrary to, um, the former provisions of, uh, 41, uh, MG or 41L. So you can, you can withhold endorsement for a specific reason. And that would be that you, uh, that aren't conform with the, uh, the requisite uh, rectangle is not shown, to make sure that the shape of the lot, that's the whole purpose of the requisite rectangle. And that you wanna, you wanna language that, uh, establishes um, a note that says that lot 1 or lot 2 is non-conforming until it is actually combined with parcel A.
Okay. Excuse me. Uh, my name is Charlie Woodward, and I work for Professional Land Survey Associates. Uh, we do in fact have the deed from Mrs. Moore, okay? And, uh, Mr. Chuckard has paid Mrs. Moore for the property, and I do agree with Azu, okay? That that's something that should be, uh, stipulated on the plan. We do in fact stipulate something to that effect, uh, as note number 2 under surveyor's notes in the bottom of the okay? But I think to clarify it even more, I think the wording that Azu has offered makes more sense. So we'd be glad to add that to the plan. That's not a problem at all. And we'd be glad to add the requisite square, okay? That also is not a problem.
So, so Mr., um, Romulus, do you want us, so, Mr. Woodward, do you want us to vote not to endorse, or do you want to ask us to continue it, or?
I'm gonna, I'd, I'd like to have you endorse it, okay? But I think that we could, uh, make it conditional that we in fact add this to the plan. I can add, as a matter of fact, the plan I have sitting in front of me on my desk, I've already added that to the plan. So if the board has nothing further they would like me to add, okay? I can see, uh, Mr. Romulus, someday this week, we had, uh, discussed tentatively on a Friday, okay? And I could drop off the Mylar, and the, if the board would be nice enough to endorse it, that would be good. So if you could vote to endorse, subject to me adding those two things, that would be good.
Yeah, so, um, as Mr. Woodward said, I would suggest you guys endorse with the concern, with the, uh, provision that we, the plan meets what, uh, Mr. Antonero raised, and, um, we don't, uh, approve a building permit, uh, on the retreat lot, unless those, uh, concerns are met.
The, about the, okay, let's back up here. You can make a reason, you can, uh, note a reason for non-endorsement, but you cannot, uh, vote to endorse, subject to, that just doesn't, the law does not allow you to do that way.
Okay.
So so they cannot vote, subject to you. It's not like a point, it's not like a definitive subdivision challenge. That has a different threshold.
Whatever, whatever makes the most sense and is the most convenient for the board, right? Uh, I do agree with, uh, uh, Azu's reasoning for wanting that on there, so I think that's something that should be on the plan. So how, we'll put it on the plan, and however the board decides to enforce the plan is fine with us.
One, to me, Elijah.
So, Azu, what you just said, how about if we, how about if, well, I, I was just gonna try to make it easier so that somebody could go in and sign it once those things were on there. We don't have to endure, how many days do we have left?
Uh, till the 27th.
Yeah, this is, we had endorsed it by the 27th.
The 27th of, um.
April.
April. And we don't have another meeting before then.
No. I mean, to make a clean, um, good, uh, vote to not endorse, um, Mr. Woodward can redraw the plans, re- reapply, um, we can waive the, uh, A and R fee, and then, um, you know, it can be held on the next, uh, planning board meeting.
How about if those corrections are made and staff verifies that they've been made before the 27th? Could one of the approved signers on the board go in and sign it?
No, because, because that, no, because what you're trying to make it is a conditional.
Okay, all right, all right.
So unless, as you just to hold a special meeting on the 7th, and then continue to that date, then that's fine. But you're just gonna have a special meeting to vote on it, you're voting to endorse a plan that is before you. The plan that is before you is not what you want to endorse, so you cannot vote to endorse.
What is, what is, uh, first meeting in May, Mr. Romulus, what's the date?
It is May 6th.
6th.
So you're right, so the recommendation and what we're looking for a motion for is not to endorse um, until the note that you recommended is added and the, uh, until the note that you recommended is added and the building area box is added to the plan as well to conform that the lot meets the lot shape requirement, correct?
Yeah, correct. And I will and I will and I will echo what Elijah said. Mr. Romulus suggested that you would, that you would file it and then you can waive that fee because it's already been paid. I have no problem with that. Or if they don't want to refile it and then done, you know, as a new application, even though you are within the fee, it's just as easy to request you to delay your action on the application until May sixth. And then you can continue the hearing to May sixth.
It's not a hearing.
Have the plan. Then you have the plan then.
That makes more sense.
So if Mr. Woodward requests to go to May sixth, then we don't have to vote to deny to endorse, correct?
That's correct. That makes more sense.
Well, I mean, the it will be, the twenty-seventh is the last day to endorse. If not, then it can be filed with the town clerk. So then the board has to take an action saying whether they want to endorse it or not. Or else they can go to the town clerk.
We can get we can get a written request for an extension from Mr. Woodward.
Yes, ma'am.
Elijah, and that will extend the twenty-seventh deadline.
Right. But he can at least, Mr. Woodward, if not having the benefit of submitting a written document right now, can, I mean, this meeting is being recorded, so he can verbally request that the decision be extended to May sixth and then follow up with a letter. Right? Because this meeting is being recorded.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And we can also email you the request first thing tomorrow after requesting that extension tonight verbally. Okay, so just to be just to be clear, Mr. Woodward, you're requesting that we continue this A and R review of endorsement until May sixth at six thirty?
Yes, sir.
And you'll provide us with an email that confirms that?
Yes, sir. That will come to your office tomorrow.
It'll come before it'll come before the twenty-seventh, right?
It'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, good.
So do we have do we have a motion to act on Mr. Woodward's request to continue this to May sixth at six thirty?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue this to Wednesday, May sixth at six thirty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Jamien, alright, so I'll do the roll call. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mr. Jamien?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
Thank you, everybody. Be safe.
See you later.
You too.
Take care of yourselves.
Okay. We have minutes to be approved, April first, twenty twenty. Has everybody read them?
I did. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April first, twenty twenty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who was that? Steve?
Yeah.
Um, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Oh, hold on, I'm sorry. How many times am I gonna do this before?
By the time we're back in person, you'll be trying to do a roll call every time, so.
I'll be doing a roll call every time. Alright, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mr. Jamien? And I'm a yes, okay. Is there a director's report or board of committee reports?
Uh, not this week.
No, no.
Any staff reports? No, okay. Mr. Antonero, I find it hard that you're quiet.
Why? You told me that I'd be out at seven twenty. I just want to let you do it seven forty-eight.
Um, any board member comments? Do we have any public on that are trying to ask questions or anything? I can't see Mr. Romulus.
That chat's been pretty quiet.
I don't see any. Nobody said anything else.
So I'm really not that smart sometimes. The chat has sixteen messages in it. Are those all questions that have been coming in today?
All the chats are from today, yes.
And those were all answered? Okay, good.
Yep.
Alright. Alright, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Jamien?
Second.
By Mrs. Greenow. Do I really need a roll call to adjourn?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mr. Jamien?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay.
I shouldn't have been yawning.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Good night. Stay safe.